The request from the customer, you fill the request from the customer. And what we are asking you guys to do is not that it's to take a step back and say, why do you think you need this? What's driving this request? How is it going to solve this challenge? And one other thing that I think you'll find as you go through this process is not all IT directors know nearly as much as you think they do. I, you know, what I understand quite well now after eight years is the ability of the benefit of the Microsoft solution that we sell all the time, right? And so I can answer a lot of questions to somebody who's very technical about the capabilities of the software. And then when they want to get really deep, I call in an engineer. And I have no problem saying, I don't know. That's another thing, like, I don't have to know. I'm blonde, I'm like, I don't know, it's okay.
So do you believe that that people make emotional decisions and they try to justify it with with tactical, you know, stuff? They take, they make emotional decisions first. We think that they make, you know, really tactical, real style, scientific. That's how they make their decisions, but maybe they make it emotionally first, then they have all this data to back it up.
Absolutely right. It is if you think about the different types of the different regions in our brain, right? We have that lizard brain, the prehistoric piece of our brain that wants to feel safe and connected to the tribe, because that's where safety is. And then you have this logical analytical piece of our brain that developed years later. That's, that's not the, that's not the area of the brain we use to make decisions. We make decisions in the lizard brain. We make decisions where we feel safe. And so that is so important when you're trying to get somebody to change the way they do business or to make, take, take a step out on a limb and confront a group of their, you know, peers and ask them to do something differently. Like, how do we make them feel safe enough to even step out on that ledge?
Out on that branch, right? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Tina.
I have a question for you. Sometimes when you're, when you're on these sales call, they have a particular problem and they're trying to solve it. And you know, it's more or less they looking for you to tell them how to fix it versus, you know, trying to hire you to do the work. So how do you avoid giving them the answer when you're having that, that sales call?
Yeah, yeah, Teresa, that's a good question. It's a, it's something that we walk all the time because, you know, most of the time, I mean, I'll give you what I, what I know for free, right? That's fine, I'm, I'm not a billable resource. But we do get people that want to pick our engineering, our engineering team's brain. And so we do try to, you know, a lot of the steps that we take to try to make sure that we're engaged with somebody who's really interested and active and participating in the sales cycle and help us gauge where we're at in the deal. Gives us the information on if we can put people in front of our engineers or not, because we do that free, it's part of our pre-sales. But I can tell you, if I have a prospect who's used two or, two or three meetings with an engineer and hasn't purchased anything, they come back to me again, they burned it, I will charge them for that time. So it's kind of a fine line, you've just got to feel it out and see, you know, sometimes you can give, give a little something to get a larger project and sometimes you feel like they're taking advantage and you have to take a step back.
Because it's just like, sometimes you feel like they're just testing to see how much you know and what they, and there's always that fine balance, right? Because you kind of want to show them that you have the expertise, but at the same time, you don't want to give out the, the answer to something that you could have built for to develop for them.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what we do, if you, if, you know, we do the work because either they don't have the skill set, they could find a copy of a scope online, but actually implementing it is a whole nother.
Yeah.
Yeah, whole nother, you know, puzzle. And so for, you know, it's a lot of times we're doing it because they don't have the time or for them to do it, it would take four times as long because they're going to have to muddle their way through it. I mean, you know, Microsoft provides a lot of information online on how to do what our team does, but it's one thing to look at it and read it, it's a whole nother thing to get in and, and actually troubleshoot it and make it work. And so we, we take on so many projects where people have started the project and either realize they're in over their head or completely messed it up. And then it's three times as expensive because they didn't start with us in the first place. So, um, you know, I will have customers that I just advise that they use our team to be high level consultants if they want to deliver it, but they need someone to take, be a sounding board or look over what they're doing, just so that they don't end up in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think in my experience, Teresa, Dennis here from managed solution, what, like, the, the question around, like, how do we avoid free consulting is, I think that kind of falls a little bit on our shoulders of us before we get an engineer involved, it's just kind of, that's part of our process that we try to identify with those high level questions of asking the client, you know, has this project been identified from leadership? Or has there been maybe some budget that's been allocated or already been discussed? That kind of helps us determine, okay, is this something that, you know, they're looking to use a partner for, or is it just still very preliminary and they're just looking at speaking with a partner like ourselves to see kind of what our expertise is? So questions like that kind of help us guide the conversation, help us determine, hey, is this, do we think this is actually going to be viable opportunity? Or is it just more of a situation where they're just kind of, just looking to see, you know, how to get some free consulting out of it?
Yeah, I may be hearing this question differently. This is, all of this is really valid, but I might, I might be hearing the question that if we're talking with this IT professional and, and I'm in a role of who I am, Tina's in a role of who she is, as a consultant, I'm not trying to be the expert, I can't be the expert. So if they're having this ego thing of how, you know, communicating how smart they are, maybe I just take a step back and, you know, play into that ego and say, man, you really know a lot, you know, about this, man, I mean, you're in, you've been, you've been doing this a while, haven't, obviously, right? And then trying to steer it back into that who, what, where, when and why conversation, getting it back to the emotional, so they can drop their guard, yeah, I know you're smart, yep, we got that established. So what's driving you to this decision? How did you get here? What is your experience? You know, so anyway.
No, James, that is so insightful, because I've been, you know, I do think, just for a quick side note on gender, I do think it's really easier for women to talk to IT directors and be able to, you know, play that card of like, okay, of course you're smarter than me.
You're saying, you're saying it and I'm thinking that, you're exactly.
I mean, let's just call it as what it is, right? It is easier in some cases because I have also been in sales meetings where, you know, there's two men involved and all of a sudden you've got, uh, you know, kind of a situation where they're trying to one up each other. And that's not ever going to result in good sales, in good conversation or collaboration or brainstorming and discovery around a new solution. So yes, I would absolutely recommend being able to, you know, validate them if that's what they need for whatever reason, that they are incredibly smart and, and then, you know, circle back to how can you help them?
Yep.
Awesome. All these conversations have been so great. I'm learning as we go along too. It's great to be here with you guys. Um, yeah, so catching on Tina's comment on like the lizard brain and the, the need for, you know, security or safety, we can talk about security a little bit. Um, the study guide, you know, I took this outline from the MS 900 study guide that's online. And, and this section is on, you know, security compliance and trust within Microsoft 365. And I'm really excited because Tina was like, well, we're talking about what we should do, like what kind of presentation we should do. And she brought up zero trust and I was like, well, that's exactly, she didn't know that's what the study guide was on this week. So, um, when our team was doing this, because I, I started this study group with our sales team and it was super productive and we learned so much. Um, there is a lot of information and a lot of, you know, curiosity around the security solutions at Microsoft 365. Um, and I, you know, there's, I can go by each section. I don't know if you guys have specific questions when it comes to the security solutions, when it comes to Microsoft 365. I know that in previous study sessions, um, conditional access and MFA were brought up, but there's a, there's a ton to go over and I don't think we're going to have enough time. So if anyone has any specific questions on these, um, you can go ahead and, and ask them where we can, you know, review the more important parts that we think might be more useful.
And we will send out the, you know, the answers to this after. And I think you guys all got this prior to, but if there was something that you, you know, burning desire, want to discuss, we're happy to have a conversation collaboratively about.
Which one of these questions are you guys having the most conversations about?
Well, I don't know if Dennis and Seth have comments on that. I know within the channel, because I work specifically within the channel, I would say probably MFA and, you know, identity and access management are probably the most common subjects when it comes within the channel and working with partners.
I, I would agree with that, the MFA portion. I've been seeing a lot of conversations from clients and, and client, partner, partners' clients around the security aspect of MFA, SSO, how do we kind of lock down, bring your own device, make sure that, you know, especially with remote employees now and that kind of being the norm, how can we make sure that if a user is outside of our company network at home or somewhere else, that they are being able to access our company information securely? So we've been having quite a few conversations around that and some of the solutions, Microsoft natively, like Microsoft Intune, uh, to help push out those policies or even, um, you know, how they can authenticate when they're outside of the network at home or at a Starbucks, like myself, I'm out of Starbucks right now, how can I, you know, authenticate into the network through MFA or SSO? So I've been having a lot of conversations around that.
I agree with that. I mean, I think MFA and SSO is coming up more in my conversation. I mean, I've, you know, I guess like talking about zero trust more and more. Um, you know, we're, we're no longer within, you know, a defined parameter, our perimeter is around the whole world. So that's a different exercise, you know, get access to what you're supposed to get access to need basis, you know, you don't need, as a salesperson, you don't need to get involved with the financials and HR and things of that sort. So the, the HR perimeter, access only what you're needing to access. Um, I just haven't made any money on zero trust yet, but the MFA and the SSO is coming up more and more. So I do agree with that. And I'd be interested to know, Tina or you SD, if you guys have, you know, a similar talking track, you know, in terms of the question and how to bring this up? If that's developed as well as some of the other stuff that she's talked about, buyer, you know, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, sorry to cut you off, James. I just thought that, that's a great, great point. I think, um, like, and that would be a perfect situation where you're kind of someone like us, where we're not the technical people implementing these solutions, but, you know, we want to have enough ammo to at least have those conversations high level with, with our clients. Uh, you know, I, I might, me myself, like, when I have clients that come to me and ask us that, uh, you know, some top of things that pop up to mind with me with my talk track are, well, you know, what do you guys currently have in place for managing that? Or is that something that, um, has already been implemented? Are you guys looking to roll that out completely? Uh, and then from there, kind of guide the conversation based off that and, um, you know, what your current Microsoft solution is for that, because we have a lot of clients that have the license for it, they just haven't really rolled out the feature within it. So, you know, I kind of, from there follow up and just say, have you guys looked at Microsoft being a potential solution for that? Um, assuming that that yes is kind of the direction they're going with. I speak to a little bit about MFA, SSO, Intune, kind of what each of those do. And then just really just information gather at that point, especially if you're speaking to an IT person, they'd love to talk about those solutions and obviously they know a lot more than us. So, um, I've kind of noticed, especially in these situations, like just kind of information gathering is going to be the best tool that I can do to take that back to my technical team. And then say from there, um, you know, I spoke with this client, these are kind of the initiatives they're looking to do, this is how they're currently doing it, this is how they're hoping to possibly do it within this timeframe. Um, you know, let's go ahead and get on a call with them and then speak to a little bit more of the technical solution for that.
So do you guys, Tina and Estee, do you guys have talking tracks within the portal on this SFA, SSO presentation or what have you?
We can add them. I don't think we have anything right now, but we can certainly look at getting something out there for you, James. And I'll just round out what Dennis said, which, um, is super helpful, Dennis, thank you. I think if you're talking to somebody who understands what MFA does, um, MFA is a pretty easy, it's a foundation to security in the cloud. Like, it's just a no brainer, you have to have it. If you don't have it, you are at risk. If you're talking to a non-technical buyer and they don't know what it is or really understand it, you want to go back to again, what does it, how does it help, right? So you can talk about identity theft, you can ask them about, you know, have they ever had a notification that their credentials have been stolen? Have they ever written their credentials down on a piece of paper? Um, you know, so anytime you can give them an example, a real world example of how it could, they could use it, that is going to be helpful. And if you're talking to a C level or a financial person in the business, they would have a direct impact of having their credentials stolen because there's somebody that has access to everything. Um, you can cite headlines today, right? I mean, there's all sorts of news out there that is really topical, that supports the need for this foundational layer of security. Um, you know, password theft, right? Have they ever gotten an email that looked suspect? Did they ever click on a link that they shouldn't have clicked? These things are happening all the time, you know? And then just the fact that it's not a matter of if, in terms of when there's going to be a breach, it could be them, it could not, it's just a matter of when. One of my clients, um, that had, and this was a crypto attack, they actually, the person that actually gave the credentials to the bad actor was the IT manager.
Wow.
And when we had to go in and do the deep root cause analysis of how the breach occurred for insurance purposes, that, and of course, he had admin level access into the environment, he's the guy that clicked the link. So nobody's immune. I mean, some of these emails that are coming out that are trying to steal your credentials are super sophisticated. They look just like Apple or Microsoft and, you know, you click that link and you put in your password and now they got all of your credit card information. Or it could be the business data. So, I mean, MFA is such a no brainer. I, if I, if I see somebody that has really important data in the cloud and they don't have a secondary form of authentication, I harp on them to do it because I just feel like it's such a risky proposition.
Thank you.
Hey, James, this is Seth. I was gonna just add, and good to see you again, by the way.
Been a while.
If you're talking to a non-technical buyer, this is like something, um, I don't know if it's a challenge, you can always draw the comparison to credit cards. Uh, we, these studio credit card companies, as everybody probably knows, that sometimes a store has to get authorization just to make sure that the person with that card is the person that rightfully owns it, that they're legitimately making this request or purchase. Same with, uh, logins, multi-factor authentication, it's really just ensuring that it's the user, that that's the real person that's trying to access, uh, whatever they're trying to access. And that goes back to, as the study guide draws upon that zero trust, um, that guiding principles. So, um, so if, you know, anybody who's, you know, comes across that, if it's just maybe a little more technically challenged, uh, kind of point of contact, that's, that's usually like an easy comparison, uh, if you want, like maybe credit cards, something people are familiar with, so.
Thank you, Seth.
Yeah, awesome. That's, that's great, thank you, Seth. And I wanted to touch on one thing that Dennis said. He mentioned how a lot of the Microsoft licenses already have these solutions included and a lot of, and especially in the channel, I've seen a lot of partners bring, um, customers to us and they don't even, they're not even using, um, what their licenses can actually do. So if you do come across a customer who, they do have Microsoft licensing, um, it's always good to get, you know, get an audit done to see if they have these abilities within the licenses that they have. And it can bring up more topics and allow them to safely secure, you know, their data. Because I've seen companies paying for licenses and they're not even using, you know, the security, um, aspects of it. So, um, Microsoft does a great job, including those in their licenses and everything. Oh, yeah. Um, is anything else that anyone wants to add in or just touch on?
Um, yeah, Estee, this is Josh.
Call me Josh.
Just curious, hey, um, to know more of like what the full Microsoft security stack is. I guess I'm familiar with some of the tools like MFA, conditional access, um, Microsoft Defender and whatnot, but can customers like fully rely on just using the Microsoft security stack to secure their network and users or everything? Um, because I'm familiar with working with some MDR providers, you know, managed detection response that provide SOC as a service, um, active threat hunting and all that. So, yeah, just how reliable, I guess, is the Microsoft security stack and what all does that encompass is my question.
Do you want me to take that, Estee?
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Hey, Josh.
Hey.
Um, so specifically to you, like an endpoint detective response, you're going to be looking at Defender for endpoint. Um, I'll see if I can't pull an infographic that has a kind of a holistic look at all the different security pieces and how they plug in visually, because I think that'll be helpful. The difference between, like, we sell, um, an endpoint detect and respond and we, we also sell Defender. The difference between the two is a lot of the ones that you're probably pitching to customers out of the box are going to have a security operations center to remediate any of the threats. And if you are looking at a solution like Defender, Defender isn't going to have, you have to do that. So think about going up market with companies that have an IT team that will be able to manage those alerts. Or if you're going to partner them with somebody like us who can do that as a part of a managed service. But if they don't have anybody that can take the information that's coming out of this tool and remediate anything that looks like a threat, they're not a good candidate for Defender because that's a part of the solution. It's not included. You'd then want to go into a tool that has a SOC behind it that can help with those threats and alerts.
And does managed solution provide, um, a SOC or service such as that to monitor alerts from Defender and whatnot?
That's why she meant.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, cool, cool, okay.
Yeah, we can help with that. So we can deploy Defender and then we can also do management and, um, help, help the customer with any of those alerts.
Yeah, just because customers, I think generally, don't have a large enough IT staff to fully encompass security, you know, even if they have a dedicated security contact or whatnot, so. Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah, just one person, it's going to just heap onto their workload and then it's, it's a whole nother skill set, right? So it's almost like a security specialist versus just a tier one help desk, those are two different skills. So, yeah, I think you're right.
Cool. Thanks for answering that.
Sure.
Awesome, thanks, Josh, thanks, Tina.
Tina, may I?
We're gonna, oh, sorry.
Tina, can I ask you a quick question after this class? Because I know we're at the top of the hour. After the class, or, okay.
Awesome, well, thank you, everyone. This was an awesome study session. I know I learned a lot and, um, it was super engaging, so I appreciate everyone, you know, pitching in and, and just wanting to have a conversation. I will be sending, uh, the filled out study guide as in the study guide with the answers, um, most likely by the end of today, if not first thing Monday morning. And then, uh, I know that Tina and I will work on adding, you know, talking points regarding, uh, MFA and a single sign on and, and adding those into the portal along with the recordings of the previous study session. So just keep an eye out for.
Sorry, Estee, do you guys want a copy of the deck that I presented today?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll send that over as well, because I think that we didn't read all the little details in there, but there's some good nuggets in there, I think.
Cool, awesome. Yeah, so I'll send those out and then also the invitation for next week, which will be the, the last study session for the MS 900. So, yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Estee. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you. Bye. Yeah, thank you, guys, thanks for coming.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
So, wow, I loved the smaller class.
Oh, yeah, was it better? I didn't make the first one. Um, I actually, my husband actually had gotten in an accident and so I had, like, he fell crossing the street and broke his ankle and both his wrists, so I had to run out. So I was supposed to present for the first one and ended up, he's fine, don't worry, it's all good, um, but ended up running him to the emergency room, so.
Oh, is he okay now?
Yeah, he's doing great.
Okay, wonderful. Well, you know what, I, um, I talked to Seth a little bit, he says you're a wonderful mentor to him a while ago. I would love to jump on that any way that I can in terms of just kind of being mentored, you know, by you, or if I can like jump in at any of these meetings that you have going on, some of these discussions, your, your bootcamps or whatever, that you're helping your team, I'd love to get involved in any of that stuff that, that, that you might even make available. I just, you have some very unique things that most people do not in talking about these personas, um, that, that you're talking about. I love psychology, if I wasn't in sales, I'd probably do something psychology and counseling wise, because I love people and I love to engage and connect with them. So I'm, I'm tracking with you like 100%. So I would, I would love to, to explore, you know, how I can interact with you more.
Well, part of the program that we're doing with, with this MS 900, but really the driver is to, um, be able to have people in the channel that want to participate, be part of like getting the same information that my sales team gets, right? Because we, we do this internally and, you know, we have so much fun doing it. It's, it's actually a really low key kind of fun time for us to just hang out. We do it in the evening, so we'll like grab a glass of wine and hang out and just run through some of these questions and talk about it because there's a lot to know and a lot to learn and it's changing all the time and, you know, so I like the opportunity to share, you know, my experience with them and then also all of us together just learning and growing. Um, so we're trying to emulate that with this program. It might go through a couple of different iterations as we kind of work out the kinks, but I will certainly make sure that we flag and include you on all of them. I'd like to do like a weekly training, um, that goes out and, and like I said, anybody in the channel who's interested or even have people, if I can't manage, because I do a lot with my team too, if I can't manage two weeks, just combine them and do one.
Yeah, and I would, I love to help support however that could be supported. I mean, if it's a number count, if it's the amount of people that you need to make your, to have an ROI in your time, what, whatever, but I'd, you know, if I can crash your wine party in the evenings, I would do it. There's no shame here, I would absolutely crash that and sit down and learn everything I can from you and your team. And the goal would be to succeed together, to succeed under the umbrella of managed solutions, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just want you to know that, that there, if you did consider me for something like that, there would be an ROI for it.
Absolutely, James. Well, I so appreciate that, I definitely will. And, um, I mean, I'm happy to, anytime you have a question, feel free to reach out to me directly. I mean, you should have my contact. Do you have my contact?
I don't, I don't think so. I would like to.
Okay, I'll send you, I'm sure we've got yours. I'll send you an, uh, email with my contact information so that you have my cell and my email and you can reach out to me anytime.
Okay.
And then let me just make sure I've got you in here. If Seth and Estee are doing their jobs.
Huh huh.
Yeah, Nichols Consulting, yeah?
Actually, let's do IQ Wired, james@iqwired.net.
Okay.
I don't care what it is. Um, I, I have Nichols Consulting, which I have my own S card corp, but I'm part of a, I'm a branded agent of IQ Wired, so whatever you have, just as long as I get your information is fine.
Okay, I'll send it over to you. And then, yeah, I mean, it is the bigger vision, like I've honestly thought about, because we extend nationwide, there's so much, there's so much opportunity out there right now for what we do. And, you know, I have a constrained budget on how many people I can actually hire, so I'm really trying to figure out how to. So I'm really trying to figure out how do I get as many people talking about our organization? And that's a bit about how these, I, you know, study sessions were born. And then, you know, you heard Josh on the call, we met him at Channel Partners. Well, we've known the Lawlesses for a long time. But at Channel Partners last year, I was talking about all the training I do with my team. And he, much like you, said, I want in. Like, I don't have anybody to help me, teach me what you know. And so he's really great. He always shows up. And so we're trying to get a little group of people that just want to learn together and learn together. I want it to be informal and, I mean, I want to offer what I can, but I also want everybody to have an open forum to participate and share.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so do you have like a, a book list? You know, authors, books. I'd love to, to understand and get what you read and authors that you like. I read Challenger Sale. I read some of the old school Brian Tracy Zig Ziglar stuff, you know, who, what, where, why, how many? You know, those, there's some old school stuff and there's some really good modern stuff, you know, today. Strategic Sales, Miller Hyman, spin selling, whatever.
Yeah, you've read it all. You know what else I really, I really do like is I, I really love Brene Brown. I like her, I just like her philosophies on being vulnerable with people and like showing up. And, you know, it's one of the things that took me a long time to figure out as a salesperson. I, you know, I, I actually, my kind of mentor in IT sales was very much a ego-driven kind of cocky guy. He's the guy I was referencing where we'd get into these sales meetings. And if he was selling to a woman, he would win all day long because he was the guy that was going to take control, tell you what to do, help you out, fix it for you. But if he was selling with another guy, he often stumbled because he came in too strong and was threatening. But I just circle it back to, I, for many years, I thought, gosh, how am I ever going to be successful? I'm never going to be that guy. And then I just started shifting my thinking around, well, what are my strengths? And my strengths are that I'm, you know, earnest and honest and vulnerable and real. And so I think she speaks really eloquently to how people respond to your true, you know, just being you. So I like her a lot, too. I read a lot of her stuff. But I'll go through my list and I'll send you a quick email. I have a ton of books on Audible that I can recommend. And then I also am part of a leadership program called Vistage. And they, they're executive, Vistage, yeah, they just coach, they're a CEO coaching organization. But they also coach emerging leaders in organizations. So it's just executive coaching, which is amazing because there's not a lot of training to be a manager and a boss, right? You get a lot of training on how to do your job. But then often you get promoted and you're trying to run a team and you don't have that kind of training. But they do have some cool sales speakers. They're, they're all about a speaker community. So I know there's one that I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but I want to send you because he is all about the psychology of selling. So I just need to go back through my presentations and find him. And he has a ton of stuff, little snippet videos on YouTube that are easy to watch. You could pick one or two a day. And I think they're super actionable, so I'll find him.
Yeah, see this Vistage, something like an initiation fee of twenty-two fifty and then monthly dues about a thousand three hundred eighty dollars for CEOs. Does that sound about right?
Something like that, yeah. But my company pays for it. I, so I don't know. I thought it was like 10,000 bucks a quarter or something. Maybe we split it over the quarter.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's interesting. You got, you gotta be all in for that kind of investment.
Yeah, I appreciate it so much. I mean, I've been with a company for eight years because Sean's been really great at investing in me. You know, so it makes sense for me to stay here and spend my time. So I've been able to grow and move through the ranks. I started in business development, just cold calling and setting appointments for our VP of Sales.
Yeah, me too. I, I do want to give you some feedback on Chitacla. You were on that call and so he's intimidated about SharePoint that it's just going to grow into this behemoth, this monster that if he leaves, he's not going to be able to manage it and maintain it, right? So he's looking at another kind of solution, a company that will help him develop his, what was that other product? Not SharePoint, but DocuShare, I think is owned by, is it DocuShare that's owned by IBM? But he, but he's, he's intimidated by SharePoint. So he's talking with a local company. So I'm having a hard time trying to get him to talk with you guys again. I know Seth has been reaching out to me. I know, I know he likes you and he likes the fact that your company is diverse. As, you know, women own, that was one of the things that caused you to stand out at very first. But he talked with some other people and some other people have influenced him that, you know, SharePoint is going to be a pretty big lift for you. So he's just looking at how, how he can double down in his DocuShare and a local context. So that's the feedback so far.
He already has DocuShare?
I believe so.
Okay.
And it might, I hope it's DocuShare. When you send me the email, I'll validate that's what he has. But, yeah, he has that already.
Because there's some tools out there and I, I guess I would want to dig in a little bit to, you know, SharePoint being unwieldy, does he mean just nobody to clean up the files? Like, what does that mean?
I'll go back to some notes and frankly, I recorded it. So I'll, I'll go ahead and, and I'll revisit those challenges that he's talking about. But he just feels like it's just going to be unsustainable, you know, in terms of the complexity of it and the lift and the involvement. And if he's, and, and how much he's going to have to be involved himself. And if he gets hit by a bus, who else is going to take this load? Those are the things that he's kind of intimidated about.
Okay. Okay. Well, if you let me, if we figure out, you know, any more specifics than that, I mean, there's definitely some tools out there to help manage SharePoint. There's a ton of Microsoft consultants that can step in. SharePoint Online, the modern version of SharePoint, he may have a past association with SharePoint on-prem. Because SharePoint on-prem, you know, was the original iteration and it had to have a developer to support it and it was cumbersome. And there was a lot of, a lot of IT involvement. SharePoint Online really is just the backend interface of Teams. And so, you know, while your files sit in SharePoint, your users are interacting in Teams. And so there's not a ton of IT involvement once everything is stood up properly and it's all governed by your Active Directory and Microsoft permissions. So I'd love to learn a little bit more about the specifics because there might be something that we could touch on. And, you know, if it's something technical, I could grab Richard and ask one of my engineers. But, yeah, I don't, I don't have an immediate answer. But if you get me a little more detail, I might be able to come up with something.
In detail it is. I will listen to some, some previous discussions and recordings that I have and I'll come up with some of those, those items and let's strategize together. Because if anyone could get back into that situation, it's probably, probably you and probably your teams. I will, I will take that upon myself to get back.
Yeah, that would be great. Let me know. And if, you know, we can help, I'm happy to do it. I'd love to do that.
Great. So, yeah, give some thought of how you can integrate me into your world. If it's organic, like, you know, talking here and there, that's fine. Or, or these little specialized upon groups here, like this one, whatever, I'd love to just learn from you.
Okay. Hey, James, you know, I just realized I'm missing a warm-up clock. I'm going to hop off really quick. I apologize, but I'll send you an email today, promise. All right. Great to talk to you. Bye-bye.
Bye.